I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Would Mayor Blanch please have a seat right here?
Say something, right? Tell them what you want, who you are. You go to. Laurel Elementary, right? Just tell them who you are. Right there.
Um.
You're good. Yeah, just tell them or tell everybody who you are. And it'll turn green.
Um. My, 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 um.
Good? Okay. You want to tell a little bit?
Yeah.
Keith up there, stay right there.
Stay right there.
Just tell them your name, say your name first.
Uh.
Say your last name.
Kayah.
All right, say your last name.
Blanche.
And what grade you in?
Fourth.
The school you go to?
Laurel Elementary.
Okay, what happened last week? Who you meet last week?
The governor.
Why did you meet the governor?
I got first place for my, um, was in the, uh, I think?
Yeah, yeah, she got first place because at Maryland Municipal League, we had a committee called the Engage and Outreach Committee. They do one of the fourth graders in the whole state of Maryland. And you won our district, District Nine Laurel Elementary School. You won the essay contest if you was a mayor, if you was invited to Annapolis to meet Governor Westmore. Remember that? You were so nice, you invited your classmate Gabriel because he came in second place. So you're a leader already. So give her a hand, everybody.
Well.
Nah, you can go back in a second.
Okay, my name is Gabriel Griglian. Uh, I'm in fourth grade. Uh, Laurel Elementary School. I got second place in the mayor writing contest.
Good job.
There you go. Good job.
We have a couple presentations on behalf of the mayor and city council. So here is. Let me get it because we didn't put one in there. We want to make sure this is the key to the city pin, our logo on it. It opens no doors and it doesn't get you out of trouble. But we're proud of it because it has our seal. We hope you will be as well. We want to thank you guys for all the work you did going to Annapolis, writing your essays, being part of that. And then we had, I was out of town, we had Councilor Nor, we had our city administrator, our deputy and others all there here, you guys on. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. Thanks for the good work you're doing. You're going to be in the chair someday, right? Very good. Can you get one with every, all the council down below, you think, Audrey? Okay, let's go down, down below. We're going to get one group shot, okay? Come on this way.
Thank you so much, Kayah and Gabriel. We're proud of you. You represented Laurel well, and we can't wait to see what you do in the future. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Here.
Councilman Sidnor?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Mayor Mo.
All right. The next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the March first, two thousand twenty-three work session, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three special work session, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting in the March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Are there any edits to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes as rated on record, March the first, two thousand twenty-three, March the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, March the thirteenth, a regular meeting, two thousand twenty-three, and March the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, can I get a second?
A second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right. Next agenda item is the report of the mayor and city council, and I'll start with Councilman Mitchell.
One second. Let me start up. Greetings, greetings, packed to see a full house, like always. Always, you know, happy for the community to come out and engage with the city council hearings. On May ninth, I went to the South County Democratic Club meeting at Forest Heights Town Hall to check them out. They have just re-energized. They've been around for a while, but they just got a lot of new members. So I went to check them out. And then to kick Teacher Appreciation Week off, because Teacher Appreciation Week just passed, May eighth to the twelfth, we went to Laurel Elementary School. And when I say we, I was joined by Delegate Kim Taylor and Carl DeWalt at many of the schools. And I just want to say that at Laurel Elementary School, the principal, Melinda Lee, she's actually retiring after twenty-two years of being the principal at Laurel Elementary. So there was many generations there, and one of the greater parts is a lot of people that volunteered with me actually attended Laurel High School, I mean Laurel Elementary School as students. So they saw their old principal, they saw their old counselor, and that was a great moment. We also got to celebrate my old alma mater, Oakland's Elementary School. And so the principal, she wasn't still there, she retired a few years ago, Ms. Nix. But the teachers were very appreciative. And so later that day, we went to Scotchtown Hills, and we had lunch with them. And I want to give a big shout out to Mad Cow Grill in Acapulco, who provided them lunch, as well as PG Changemakers and Make Smart Cool, as well as County Council Chair-at-Large Calvin Hawkins and Delegate Adrian Biafo. As I mentioned, Carl and Kim joined me at all the schools. We also got the opportunity to go to MLK Middle School and celebrate with them. And I will say, we also got the opportunity to stop at Montpelier, because at Montpelier, Principal Furlough is retiring or retired after seventeen years of service as a principal. And so later on, you know, later on, May tenth, I went to read to kids at the Spalding Library for Make Smart Cool. They do reading every day to kids, it's about an hour long. And then on May eleventh, I got to go to my own alma mater, Laurel High School, where we gave them lunch, oh, no, I'm sorry, we gave them breakfast. And that was sponsored by Love Life Coffee. And so we definitely want to give a shout out to, you know, all of our community partners. I also wanted to say congratulations on reopening of the Laurel Farmers Market. And later that day, I also got to attend the Maryland Adult Use Conversation in Annapolis with Delegate C.T. Wilson. And to close out the week, on the twelfth, I went to MLK. And on the seventh, I attended an annual advocacy gathering in Gambros. It was well attended by Delegate Tina Melnick, Delegate Sandy Bartlett, and several other dignitaries, basically commemorating the passing of Kathy's daughter, who was killed by the, you know, the hands of the police. And so I also wanted to give thanks to Temple Grace and Style and Stan Lyon for fitting three Laurel High School students with suits. And I know that Stan Lyon, I want to give him a big up because the gentleman was six-six, so he needed a custom suit. He couldn't go anywhere for the ready-to-wear fit. That Saturday, I was also invited to a mental health gala, It's Okay Not to Be Okay, at the Anthem DC. And then I also attended the City of Laurel Employee Luncheon. The very last thing, of course, was the Main Street Festival. The Main Street Festival, I want to thank the Laurel Board of Trade for putting on the Laurel, put on the Laurel Main Street Festival, it's the forty-first one, and so that's very big, and definitely want to give them props. And also want to mention that it's not, it's not too late to donate to Lars. Last, last week was the Do24 fundraiser, and I was able to stop by Oliver's. And then, of course, you know, what you guys all are here for today. I'm glad that, you know, we are going to be voting on you guys getting collective bargaining rights, a fight that you guys started several months ago. You know, you guys went out in the community, you guys got petition signatures, you know, when, when, when they said, wait, you guys kept pushing forward. And, you know, I'm happy to stand with you now and happy to stand with you, of course, since the beginning of this. And my hope is that the rest of, you know, the city employees are granted collective bargaining rights. So with that being said, that's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. In nineteen sixty-two, John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day, which eventually turned into Police Week. And it's to honor those officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice in protecting us. This, this week, it was May fourteenth to May twentieth. And in talking with Chief Hamel, I find out that he's been attending Police Officers Week since he's been a rookie at Montgomery County. And he also took a couple of other officers down there, and what they do is they go to the airport and they meet families of these fallen heroes and escort them into the, into the Capitol and into the police memorial and their hotels and everything, something I could never do. But that's, that's actually great for the Laurel Police Department, and it's an honor to have our officers down there and our chief take such an interest in the Police Memorial Week. On May nine, May ninth, I participated in Laurel Cat's fundraiser at Restaurant One-Ninety-Eight, which is out on, which is in Burtonsville, off, right off of One-Ninety-Eight, and the name says it all, One-Ninety-Eight. They have good food and it was a great time. And like with Martin, I got to meet Delegate Kim Taylor from District Twenty-three in Prince George County, and I was there when she gave Melinda Lee, the principal at Laurel Elementary, a citation for her many, many years being a Laurel Elementary School teacher, principal. On May eleventh, the farmers market opened up. I got there about five o'clock. Mike Walls was already done playing, so I know they're going to have good music there. It was well attended. Not a lot of vendors, but I've, eventually I know it'll grow as the farmers start to get more and more produce there, but it was a great time. And I found out that our own Bill Bailey's daughter is a baker, and she had her baked goods there, and they were absolutely excellent. On the twelfth, with Martin, I've never been in this school before, but I attended the Martin Luther King Middle School, and there was a, it was a great presentation, and they made us walk down the carpet and all kind of things that they had for School Appreciation Day. Same day, I went to the employee luncheon, and I want to congratulate all the employees from the City of Laurel that received awards. It shows the, but only thing I was shocked about is all the new employees that were there. There had to be at least thirty or forty of them there for their first year here. I then, on the thirteenth, I went over and I helped the police, police department with Chief Hamel. They passed out steering wheel locks for Hyundai's and Kia's, a little proactive things that they gave the community, the people in the community, and the only requirements was if you had a Hyundai or Kia, because they're the ones that are getting stolen right now. And there was one lady there, and she's, I asked her who she was, her name's Connie, she's just a regular citizen, and she came there to help. And I love to see that when people in the community come out and help, especially at the police department. On the thirteenth, along with the National Wildlife Federation, a lady named Naomi was at the Alama Community Center handing out native plants. These native plants are so important for our future and for the monarch butterflies and things, black-eyed susan, milkweed plants. And every plant that we had in there was given away, which is awesome to see. And then on the fourteenth, I was at St. Mark's Church, same thing, National Wildlife Federation, the chief was there, a lot of other people, the mayor, and it was a, it was a great time, and they gave out plants. Same plants, and there was, I really appreciated that there was a lot of volunteers from one who had completed the Citizens Police Academy there. So it shows that the programs that we do in Laurel just keep bringing people back, and they volunteer for special events like that. On the eighteenth, I was at Laurel Elementary School, and I want to recognize Roy Gilmore, he's been at every one of these brighter bites that we, we've had at Laurel Elementary, passing out fresh fruits and vegetables to almost a hundred and fifty families throughout the Laurel community. On the nineteenth, I, I helped out at American Legion Post Sixty with their bingo, delivering food. And then there was on May twentieth, I was at the Main Street Festival, and I helped out with the Laurel for the Patuxent, and they were also giving out native plants. But if you look at those three organizations, the Islamic Center, St. Mark's Church, and Laurel for the Patuxent, a little teeny little plant has brought so much joy in people's lives, and it's so important to any, any sort of thing that you have any difference with someone, these little teeny plants help bring people together. And every one of them almost was given away at Laurel for the Patuxent, and they had a ton of them in there. And it's great to see, not only those plants make people smile, but when they plant them, it's going to be so much better for our community and Jess and Brian and Mike and Holly and Stosh and the rest of the ones at Laurel for the Patuxent. They do an absolute fabulous job, and again, they're all, they're all, they're, they're all nonprofit, and they're all out there on their own time, helping to make our community better. And God bless them and thank them for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. I'll go back to Councilman Mitchell, requested to speak again.
Thank you. I just wanted to wish a happy birthday, fortieth to Deputy Chief of Engine Forty-nine, Rajah Rose. And that being said, you know, that was it, I wanted to make sure to wish him a happy birthday.
All right. Next, we'll move on to Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Laurel's been very busy the last two weeks. I don't want to bore everybody with all the events that we've all been attending, that the city's been putting on. But I did want to go over a couple others that I've attended. On May twelfth was Music at the Mansion, for those that have not been to Goody Mansion. It's a great space for events, weddings. This was a Park and Recreation event that was light music, just great social gathering, amazing weather. There will be more of those events coming up. On the eighteenth of the month, I spoke at the Laurel Resist Meeting. Happy to meet with anybody that's in the community, let them know what's going on in the city, just give them my general perspective of, of what we can be doing here in Laurel and answer any questions they have. It's not always easy to come to one of these meetings and ask a question in front of a whole panel of us, so was happy to help them learn more about the city. On Saturday, I think everybody in this room was at Main Street Festival. I wanted to thank everybody from the Laurel Police Department, Parks and Recreation, Public Works. You guys were all there when I got down there at six AM. You had a very long day that day, but it went off without any incident. And then finally, yesterday, I went to tea at the mansion, again, down at Goody Mansion. Parks and Recreation does a high tea and a regular monthly tea throughout the month. Tomorrow night, we will have the Environmental Affairs Committee, we'll be meeting virtually at six PM. We're always happy to have more attendees. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Next, we'll have Councilman Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we had the ceremony for Kayla Blanch and Gabriel, May the eighth, I attended, excuse me, May the ninth, we attended the Governor Mansion to award our fourth graders, I was mayor essay contest, and so she's, I witnessed her here today, so congratulations again, Representative Laurel, really appreciate that. Also, on May the eleventh, it was Teacher Appreciation Week. I accepted a job in Prince George County Public School System last year as a substitute teacher, and I was just going from school to school. So this past August, when school, before school started, Prince George County Public School was short nine hundred teachers, and my phone was ringing every day, so I accepted a long-term position at CMIT from August to December. I was teaching physical education, then I started teaching Western Geography and Eastern Geography, and they asked me to come back in January, but I didn't come back as a long-term, I just continued to come back when they needed me. And so I was there last week, I was doing testing, and so CMIT is the school I go to often, the day I was at CMIT High School. So we definitely appreciate the teachers, I got a hard job, being a teacher, a full-time teacher for like six months, and I really appreciate what they do, so always salute the teachers, any chance you get, always show them their respect. Continuing my report, like you said, I attended the Farmers Market, it was great, thanks to Poppin' Economic Community Development for bringing that back to the City of Laurel, really appreciate that. As you know, the Main Street Festival, we attended that, that was great. The highlight of my report, I want to say that even though this is Public Safety Appreciation Week today, May twenty-first, Sunday, I know next week is going to be very busy for me, and I'm going out of town, but I wanted to get firsthand knowledge on what's going on with Poppin' Public Works. So I worked with the Poppin' Public Works for four hours, from seven-thirty to twelve-thirty. I want to commend the operator Nate and Dave, good driver and good labor worker, so I worked side by side with them for those four hours to get a firsthand knowledge, to take it back to the mayor and the city administrators and things that I learned, some things I think should be improved as well. And so, like we said earlier, that, I'll mention, I'll go into that later, when that bill come before us, I have some information, I want to ask Mr. Berry, we go on the public record. And other than that, that's clear my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. I'll be brief. On the twentieth, I was at the Main Street Festival with everyone else, I was happy to see everyone out. Was happy to see all the community out and people from outside of the town here enjoying our festivities. On the seventeenth, I was at the University of Maryland Laurel Medical Center Ribbon Cutting. I spoke on behalf of the City of Laurel, it was beautiful. In attendance was, Councilman Mitchell was there as well, and our city administrator and deputy city administrator, Joanne Barr, and Christian Pulli, it was, it was a great event, and I'm happy that's coming to the city. I got a chance to stop by the Farmers Market at the end of the hour, about the last half hour of it, so I got, I didn't get to see everybody there, but I did get to see some of the vendors, and it was, it was beautiful as well. And I just want to say, I'm, we found out, you know, you guys know with the, with the unionization coming up, we found out the twenty-seventh, and I'm happy today that we're going to vote on it, and that is going to move forward. So just to let you know, when we say something, we mean it, the council, we do, and I can't, I can only speak for myself, but this council, we try to work together at all costs. And when the information came to us on the twenty-seventh, you know, we, we sat there, took it in, we told you, we worked with the administration, they took their time, did what they needed to do, and got back to us, and here we are today, so. Congrats to all you for your hard work and pushing and coming in too, and we admire that. All right? So that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me offer condolences to the family and friends of Terry Thompson. Terry was a former City of Laurel employee who passed away last week, very involved with the state of Maryland when we talk about emergency management, assisted Laurel when he was at the state level as well. We offer, again, this was unexpected, we offer our condolences to the family and friends of Terry. I did have the opportunity to attend the Metropolitan Worthington Council of Government's Board of Directors. Let me thank the individuals here at city government on the Farmers Market, want to, again, appreciate them stepping up. As you know, Laurel Board of Trade used to do that, I wanted us to get it back. Robert, I appreciate your work, I think Communications and Public Works, and Bill's shop in the back, but thank you all very much for getting that up, back up and running. The, as you heard, the employee luncheon took place. Let me congratulate all the award recipients and thank them for all the hard work they continue to do. And you heard about the music at the mansion, I think that's a little bit something new, something different, and something that looked like, at least when I was there, the amount of people that showed up really enjoyed it, and we should take a look at doing more of those there at the, at the mansion. St. Mark's United Methodist Church, the Mother's Day Native Plant Giveaway, I want to thank Jackie Jones, I want to thank St. Mark's for the invitation to be with them, and appreciate all their hard work out in the community. Members of our police department in particular are very involved with the First United Methodist Church, working with them and reaching out to the community, as well as the native.
And we offer, again, this was unexpected, we offer our condolences to the family and friends of Terry. I did have the opportunity to attend the Metropolitan Worthington Council of Governments Board of Directors. Let me thank the individuals here at city government on the farmer's market. Want to, again, appreciate them stepping up. As you know, Laurel Board of Trade used to do that. I wanted us to get it back. Robert, I appreciate your work. I think communications and Public Works and Bill Shop in the back. But thank you all very much for getting that up, back up and running. The, as you heard, the employee luncheon took place. Let me congratulate all the award recipients and thank them for all the hard work they continue to do. And you heard about the music at the mansion. I think that's a little bit something new, something different and something that looked like, at least when I was there, the amount of people that showed up really enjoyed it. And we should take a look at doing more of those there at the at the mansion. Saint Mark's United Methodist Church, the Mother's Day Native Plant Giveaway. I want to thank Jackie Jones, I want to thank Saint Mark's for the invitation to be with them and appreciate all their hard work out in the community. Members of our police department in particular are very involved with the First United Methodist Church, working with them and reaching out to the community as well as the native plant giveaway. On the eighteenth, we did have the Prince George's County Municipal Chapter Meetings. That is the chapters made up of the twenty-seven municipalities here in the city of Laurel was held at District Heights. I want to thank them and congratulate them for hosting. Very good meeting, a lot of good information and it's nice to go to other municipalities. As you heard, Main Street Festival. Let me acknowledge and thank Commander Luby, who is the Grand Marshal. I don't think there could have been a better choice. She is a wonderful person, very dedicated to the American Legion and the Legionnaires there and does a great job for the organization. And we appreciate them working with us as they do, day in and day out. They do a lot of things that quietly, that they don't look for credit for, but we here in city government know what they do and we appreciate that. So congratulations to her as well as the Laurel Board of Trade. I think day was a beautiful day. I think it turned out all of our city forces were there. I want to thank them and acknowledge the work that they do. Not, you know, it starts at nine and ends at four. Well, they're there, you know, way early and they're there way late. We acknowledge that on all our city forces and thank them for the work they do. On the same day, we did have Kids to Park Day over at Laurel Lakes. And again, that was something that, you know, we we always want to make sure we acknowledge and we want to make sure, although with the Main Street Festival going on, it was tough, but they did have some people show up and participate, which is good. You did hear about the schools. I'm not going to go into all the schools I visit, but I do want to acknowledge and appreciate many of the teachers I spoke to. And as most know, we have our quarterly meetings with the principals where we talk about discussion issues facing not only the schools but also the city. And it's a good relationship that we have. A couple of announcements, there'll be a city hall in the park at Discovery Community Park on May the twenty-fourth at six PM. And on May the twenty-eighth is Memorial Day Services right across the street over at Ivy Hill Cemetery. That's at eleven AM. That's our joint public safety Memorial Day Service. As well as on May the twenty-ninth, city, it's a city holiday, so city hall will be closed. For those in the community that may be watching, check the holiday schedule for trash and recycle recycling. And Mr. President, I'm not going to read all these, but we'll put them out. We do have a proclamation, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, LGBTQ plus Pride Month in June. Twenty twenty-three twenty-two, which is National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June the second. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three is Juneteenth on June the nineteenth. And twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four is National HIV Testing Day on June the twenty-seventh. Mr. President, if I could, I did receive late this afternoon, a letter from the chairman of the Juneteenth Committee. I did make copies and put it in council's box. We'll ask the clerk to make it part of the record, but I won't read everything, but I'll read quite a bit of it that he put. It's addressed to me and to the Laurel City Council. I'm writing on behalf of the Laurel Juneteenth Executive Planning Committee to express our heartfelt gratitude and your unwavering support in recent budget allocation of three thousand dollars each year is towards the planning and programming expenses for the Juneteenth Celebration for FY twenty-three twenty-four. Your commitment to recognize and commemorate commemorate the significance of this event in our nation's history is truly commendable. The allocation allocated funds will ensure us to be able to plan and execute a wide range of activities, educational programs and community events that will foster unity, encourage dialogue and celebrate the rich cultural heritage of the African-American community, which these resources we can now expand on because of the funding and the outreach efforts that we'll be doing to engage speakers, to speak artists, performers and offer diverse a diverse range of programming that will assist our residents and our visitors alike. Furthermore, we recommend, excuse me, we recognize, recognize and appreciate the collaborative spirit between the Laurel City Council and our committee, which has followed us closely, which has followed us closely together to ensure ensure success of Juneteenth Celebration. Once again, we extend our deepest gratitude to the mayor and to the members of the Laurel City Council for their steadfast commitment to promoting diversity, inclusion and historical understanding within our community. Again, thank you very much for your continued support. We remain remain at your service and sincerely Ron Peterson, Chair of Laurel Executive Committee. And that'll be part of the record here. He asked us to read that in. And I just want to make sure and there's a copy in each of the boxes as well. Last, Mr. President, I do have a couple mayoral appointments with the chairwoman resigning or retiring, I should say, on the Board of Trustees for the pension. There is a appointment needs to be made for a new chair and that's E. Michael Green, Chair of the Board of Trustees. David Johnson is with us in the back. He's accepted a position for the Board of Appeals and I want to thank David for that and Michelle Keating for the Board of Appeals.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve following individuals, Michael Green for Chairman of Pension Trustees, David Johnson of Board of Appeals and Michelle Keating, Board of Appeals.
Can I get a second?
I was looking.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Since we're lumping them all together, Michelle Keating, Board of Appeals, I would vote yes. David Johnston, Board of Appeals, I would vote yes. E. Michael Green, Chairman of Board of Pension Trustees, I would vote no.
And President, or Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
And President Smith?
Yes.
All right. Agenda number, agenda item number seven is the General Public Hearing, which I'll open at six thirty-three PM. And just a reminder that we have three-minute limit per speaker. Also, as I call your name, please come up and just give your name and address for the record. All right? And I'll go down the list. I'm not going to ask Madam Clerk because you gave me the list already. So the first one I'll call up is Lloyd Holloway.
Okay. My name is Lloyd Holloway. I'm a laborer too at Laurel DPW. I just wanted to say that today has been a long time coming, not just for me, but my employees, my coworkers as well. I've been employed for two years and these guys behind me have been there way longer than me and they have been well deserved and earned every bit that was about to come to them today. And with that being said, I hope that this opens up doors, you know, for other municipalities to get unionized and also other city employees to, you know, be a part of the collective bargaining union. I want to give a special thanks to Carl DeWalt and Martin Mitchell for supporting us every step of the way and just being there for us. I also want to thank John Barry and Alejandro and the McGeo team for supporting us as well. So with that being said, I thank you for everything.
Next, we have John Barry.
Yeah, I'm John Barry. I'm from McGeo and to all you council members and Mayor Mo, thank you. I'm really glad that we're getting to this point where we're able to approve this amendment, which is going to make it possible for all these people after a long time to get to the point where they can get the collective bargaining we want. We know that after this, there's another important stage, which means that for fifty days, you're going to be in the process of putting together the Labor Code. And we think we need to be, you know, really clear and want everybody to understand what our expectations are because this has taken a long time to get to this point. And we know that you're going to work on the Labor Code. We sent everybody some information and we would definitely be very willing to talk to any of you and ask any, answer any questions about it. I want to just list a couple of important things and explain them to you. Binding arbitration is a word that that I think you've heard in our own, in the letter that we sent to you. It's an alternative to striking, to using strikes as a leverage to negotiations and it gives both sides the opportunity to make their case in negotiations and fiscal matters and contract disputes. Binding arbitration is included in the codes for, among others, Mount Rainier and Tacoma Park, but it makes negotiations more straightforward. We also want to go on and let people know, yeah, timeliness, I know we have fifty days. Hopefully, we can get this done sooner than that. As council president, as Smith noted, this all began on the twenty-seventh of February when they, we came to the first meeting. It actually began a lot, you know, they called us up in December of two thousand and twenty-two to begin with. They signed all the cards. The fact that they've had to take this long to get to this point doesn't make any sense to me. And I hope we can all work together to make sure that this gets, gets done as soon as possible. Other, you know, we have other things that we'd like to talk about, grievance process, worker demands and other things like that. But just remember, we continue to advocate for bargaining rights for all Maryland municipalities which lack bargaining rights for city employees. And we are going to work really hard to make sure that they have a meaningful contract and a meaningful Labor Code to work with. So thank you very much and thank all you. You've done a lot. Give yourself a round of applause. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, before you are proceed, can we have Mr. Berry stay there, please?
Sure.
A second. I just want to be very clear, Mr. Berry, because you said several times on record, even said tonight, it's been a long time. And you said you've been knowing about this since December twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Well, the council, I speak, I need Councilmember Cole to rise up, I need Councilmember Smith to rise up and Councilman DeWalt to rise up and Councilman Martin to rise up as well. I wasn't aware you guys were bargaining for you until February twenty-seventh, when you came before the meeting.
Right.
Councilmember Cole, when was you aware of this?
February twenty-seventh, when the lobby was full of all of you guys and I was happy to see you here.
Councilmember Smith, when was you aware of this?
Twenty-seventh.
Mm-hmm. Councilman DeWalt, when was you aware of this?
I can't recall.
No problem, no problem. Councilman Mitchell, when was you aware of this?
I was aware sometime in December, but I did not say, I championed. I didn't follow the less investigate. So this is why we're here in May, in June, instead of June, because of their advocacy that was continued.
See, we're saying, that's why we're withholding information from the council is the lack of integrity. If Councilman Mitchell had came to us as a councilman and tell us what was going on, then we would have this problem. You guys are misleading the public.
It still took you months, it still took you months to get on board.
Council President, I think he's out of order.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay.
Order. We got to have some order. We got to have some order.
Councilmember Sidnor?
I just want to have some order in here. We're having a meeting. We're having a meeting.
Yeah, Councilman President, I don't need any questions, Mrs. Berry. We've got answers. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Appreciate it.
No, I just want to emphasize, first of all, that's where, I don't know where the dates, you know, are coming from. We got a call from people who've been working here for two years, three years, four years, five years. I don't know what the, what difference the dates make to you, but we, we worked with them. We found out how difficult it was to figure out exactly how to get them bargaining rights. If you have a faster way to do it, show it to us. Okay?
Next, we have Kyle Lewis.
I love my city. I was born and raised here, Anne Rallo County side. This Saturday, I got to talk to everybody. It was nice seeing everybody. I wish that hostility wasn't in the air right now because we have something like bigger than that to talk about here. You know, this is a, I feel, professional stage to be able to say that, you know, we as a city, more than anything, we got to stick together and we got to take care of the people who are really making the city go round. I dig in the trash for a living, guys. You guys got to understand, we just want a voice. That's it. I don't want anything else besides support from people who run the city because we obviously got the city behind our back. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record? Your address? If you guys can refrain from the clapping a little, not as long after people are speaking because we have to move on through the meeting. Can you just state your name, your address?
Kyle Lewis. Oh, I live in Glen Burnie right now. I was born on the other side of town, but I've been working here for about ten years.
Just your address for the record, though.
Oh, eight thousand two Covington Avenue, Glen Burnie, Maryland.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Dr. Zabrina Epps, Chair of the Education Committee.
Greetings, Zabrina Epps, Trevino Terrace in Laurel, Maryland. I just wanted to come before you and as you're considering your vote on the budget this evening and on behalf of the Laurel Education Advisory Committee, of which I'm Chair, to discuss the proposal that we submitted to the mayor and city council for seating the grant to go to Laurel schools. And so we've been working on this grant for several years now. We were interrupted because of the pandemic and since we have resumed, we submitted the proposal. We didn't really understand the budget process at the time, so we resubmitted and understand and are hopeful that the fund will be seated. I also wanted to put into the record some comments of my vice chair, Maria Gonzalez-Jackson. And basically, she states that the, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but she states that the funds will be used to support a variety of initiatives, including but not limited to the purchasing of school supplies, providing books to address literacy issues, funding for field trips and supporting extracurricular activities, and that these initiatives are crucial in helping our students succeed academically and socially. I also had the opportunity to accompany Councilmember Mitchell to Oakland's Elementary during Teacher Appreciation Week and then over to Montpelier Elementary to give a commendation to the principal on her retirement. And in talking with the, the teachers and in talking with at both schools, again, the the need for additional funding, even up to, you know, five hundred dollars per school, was was made known in terms of the things that they would like to do. One example is the building of Cubbies at Montpelier Elementary, mentioning that although there's some space there, that they needed more. So again, I just wanted to thank all of you to let you know that we've been working really hard and hope that the budget reflects the seating, at least the seating of this fund. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Ellen.
My name is Ellen Lyons and I'm a senior citizen of Laurel, Laurel Lake, seven nine oh one Laurel Lake Apartments. And I am also a member of CASA. Excuse me. I'm here today to ask Councilman to please support the sanitation workers of Laurel. Laurel is my home and plus it's a beautiful place and we want to keep it that place. With this, with your support, we can keep it beautiful. I have walked throughout the city of Laurel and I've seen where the hyenas have taken it up. But if we, if you pass and support these sanitation workers for better wages and benefits and 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 to be and, and, and unionize and to be unionized, I am sure with unionization, you can get beautification. So, please help the city of Laurel in unionization. I'm also here asking that Laurel has continued to support Laurel, funding Laurel. Laurel's, Laurel's has helped lots of families with food and rent. As a matter of fact, I'm one of the ones, I am a, Laurel is my food bank. I eat from Laurel's. And we need the funds and support. I need a piece of chicken. Please, continue the funds going. Keep supporting Laurel's and keep the doors open. I'm asking you to vote and unionize funding, unionize and fund and for Laurel to continue. Please, this is an ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And last on my list, I have Troy Griffiths. Just your name and your address for the record.
Troy Griffiths, Merkirk Road, Laurel, Maryland. Someone mentioned, there was tension in the room. Y'all made me think of Biggie's song, What's Beef? Moment of personal indulgence, I'm a secretary on the Laurel's Juneteenth Committee. On June 17, 2023, it will be held at Laurel's Goode Park. I know you guys are going to be there, but I invite everyone to come out. I think Councilmember DeWalt, I walked in late, you were talking about the mosque, the ICCL, if I'm not mistaken. I was there for E. Mubarak, so if anyone's here from there, you're welcome to come out as well. So, I'll be, I'll be super brief. Just real quick about the hip hop thing. Snoop Dogg was asked like, who's his favorite rapper? He mentioned Eminem wasn't on the list. Eminem got a hold of it and he was like, dog, we're on the same team, what are you doing? So, you know, take that point as you may, but I'll be super brief, right? Harry Belafonte, we lost him about less than 30 days ago and, you know, and I picked him for this quote because aside the fact that we're both of Caribbean descent, you know, it fits perfect. And his quote is, and, you know, these guys should get what they need. If the last time, you know, testifying on behalf of you all, at the end, I said, this is easy. As you, you're here, you see, it'll be easy, you guys just keep pushing. But Harry Belafonte, I don't know if I should say this, I think I was saying to you, Mr. Lloyd, at Main Street, when this works out, like, hook me up with 10% of the check, you know, I mean, it's only right. But, no, no, I get to the quote, though. Harry Belafonte said this, I was listening to an old interview, he said, as long, I'll repeat it twice, as long as oppression is profitable, the oppressor will have a huge harvest. Again, as long as oppression is profitable, the oppressor will have a huge harvest. With this being done, you're removing that harvest, right? Because someone, someone else mentioned, the young man mentioned, you dig through garbage. I'm heir to the street, these elitist people in, around these parts, they talk about their home. You more than dig through garbage, you, you hold up property value. You allow these people to brag about their homes as if there's nothing else going on when you have people living in the community who have to go get food from a pantry. So, it's bigger. So, when you remove the harvest, you allow everyone, you guys, children, will be able to go to great schools, become a rapper, you know, be in the top 10, whatever it may be. But I know it was comical here today, but I'm on the little adrenaline push here, so, because I've been, today's my second time here, I did Laurel TV interview, so I'm a little hyped up today. So, yeah, make it happen, congrats, guys, you are.
Thank you. Well, that's all I have on the list. Was there, was there anyone else? Is there another list out there? Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, well, I will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. All right, and next, under the agenda item is a second public hearing with the possible action on Charter Resolution Number 179, a charter resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Article 300 Government of the Charter of the City of Laurel to amend Section 357 to allow for collective bargaining for certain employees of the Department of Public Works. I've read the title and to the record for the second reading, and I'll open the public hearing at 6:51. Ms. Pulli, do you have anything to add?
No, Council President, I do not.
All right.
Council President, can I, can I make a motion to suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules?
Yeah, to suspend the rules for, to vote on a second hearing. We, we can suspend the rules.
This, this is the second.
Oh, oh, this, this is the final?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, so, all right, understood.
Okay, well, are there any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I know it's been said that I haven't been on the public record on this. I think I've talked to many of the employees from Public Works. My grandfather was a Public Works Union Member. I know what you guys do for a living, I know everything you go through. One of my very first Halloween costumes was fluorescent orange hoodie as a pumpkin as a kid. That was when fluorescent orange was the safety color, now we're all in yellow. But I support you guys, this gives you guys the right to unionize and what you do with that, unionization is up to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right.
Can I, can I comment?
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, of course, congratulations, you guys. I also want to thank Maryland Municipal League, they provided a lot of data on other municipalities in the area that have collective bargaining rights. And of course, all of the citizens that supported by signing the petitions and speaking up and voicing their opinions. I think that you guys receiving that pay increase is, is long overdue. So, it was an increase you guys should have received a long time ago as essential workers. And, 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 and of course, you know, I want to say that no matter who was championing the issue, it took the entire City Council to get this done. Because of course, this is a legislative function to grant you guys collective bargaining rights. And so, you know, with that being said, you know, I appreciate it and I hope that other municipalities in Prince George's County and throughout the state of Maryland, you know, give their workers rights. With that being said, thank you.
Are there any other comments before I call for a motion? Any other comments before I entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
All right.
This is, this is history. This is one of the moments where, when you get old like me, you'll sit around talking to your grandchildren and you'll tell them about this day. They probably won't believe you anyway or understand what you're talking about. But this is, this is history and you are a part of it and you worked very, very hard at it and you deserve it.
All right, with that being said, let's get ready, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll say one thing. Like I said earlier before, we didn't know about this until February. If a councilmember knew about this in December, the councilman has a duty, the right to come to the council and talk about this issue. So therefore, so there's a lack of integrity going on, so we just want to make sure that, we was never holding this union up. We support you 100%, but we didn't know about this in February until you came. So, I think that needs to be made loud and clear on record. That's all I want to say, Mr. President, you can call for a vote, I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Empathically, yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mau?
I'm gonna make a couple of comments, I'm going to concur, but I think there's been a lot of statements on both sides that in some cases are incorrect. So, I think we all need to sit back, relax. We have moved forward, we asked for certain things, we've been very transparent from the administration standpoint. I also want to make sure everybody understands, we knew, we knew that once we allowed the Police Department to do, to unionize, that the next step would be certain employees would want to do that. This is no big secret, I mean, I've been around and there's no, no issue with this. This is the first time that I've heard, when it came up on the 27th, under every, everybody's report that they supported this. So, I don't think anybody was opposed to anything. I do want to say, we work very hard. This requires 50 days, I want to make it perfectly clear. We'll get to and we will work on it, but I don't want you to, to project to the membership that that 50 days is what we're going to need. We have other things going on as well, this is the most important part here. We're going to combine the labor code to take care of future as well as with the Police Department. There are issues that will require us to do some things. And as you heard, most everybody up here, everyone out there said, just give us what the police have. That's what we were attempting to do. And now, there's been things added to that. So, we'll, we'll work through this. This is not the first time I've been through this. And I, I will say, as we have heard, and there's been statements made regarding how long this took, this moved very quickly, very quickly for a charter, charter resolution, when we found out on the 27th. And we still had to find a labor attorney, we still had to do things internally to protect not only the city, but also the employees. These are still City of Laurel employees, although you'll be unionized and you'll have a union that you'll deal with. And there's no issues there. And just, you know, everybody, take a deep breath, we all have opinions. I don't think there's a, as you have seen tonight, there has been no issue. We'll work through the rest of this. I will say, when you want to, and if you want to make sure you're following the right way to do it, Mr. Berry, as your comment said, I would start with the city administrator, I would start with the mayor's office next time and not go to the City Council. They, we will provide them with the information, we will give them the things that they want. But it's been very confusing on the administration side. So, if you asked how to make it simpler, there's a way to make it simpler. With that said, Mr. President, I'll concur and I appreciate members coming out tonight, appreciate the work you continue to do, I know a lot of you for many years. And I think there's some good things that'll be coming for you all, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, congratulations. I will close the public hearing at 6:50 AM because I didn't close it. And. Sure, we'll take a recess.
We're still down on Main Street, cleaning Main Street up. All right, we're still, they're still down on Main Street, a bunch of them.
All right. Next is Agenda Item Number Nine, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2011, An Ordinance Adopting the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the Fiscal Year of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and to levy property taxes and to authorize the collection of such taxes. I've read the title and to the record for the second reading, and I'll open the public hearing at 7:04 PM. Ms. Taylor, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. Only to add at this time that we continue to receive notifications from the state of Maryland regarding assessment appeals, but we are still within the threshold that we set for ourselves. So, we've programmed in the number of assessment appeals and abatements that will be calculated, but we continue to receive those.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, any comments from the?
Yes, I got some question, I like to ask directly, Lee, Public Works, some couple of questions about this budget. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lee. As you'll notice, last week I came down there to work with your crew, get firsthand knowledge on what's going on in DPW, if I can understand the process. And some of the things came to my attention about uniforms and boots. And I just want to ask you a couple of questions between the recycle department and the waste department. Start with the recycling, with the waste department first. Waste department, uniforms and boots, can you explain that process to me, sir?
Yes, so, in the budget year, we've, for this year, we increased the request for uniform and boots. So, the, so each category is a program category, although it applies to generally the same workers. We have a toll of about 29 workers from crew leaders below that we have to make sure have proper uniforms. Out of that, for fiscal year '24, it will be 10,900. Out of that, for fiscal year '24, it will be $10,900 for uniform. I would like to state that because you will see in certain categories where you will see only $5,000 for uniforms, one category will have 1,300, and one category has 4,600. All those categories together make up the uniform budget for my employees. So that we did increase the money for those uniforms. With, with respect to boots, it's the same thing. So in the three categories total, there will be $6,150 in this upcoming fiscal year for boots. So I'm very pleased that we will definitely have enough money to make sure that all of our employees have enough uniforms, all-weather types of gear, and boots to make sure that they're up to date and up to standard.
Follow-up question. So employee, let's say the summertime, his boots are worn out, and now it's wintertime, and his weather is real wet, and his boots are damaged. What's the process that employee getting new boots? Did that employee purchase new boots itself, or would the city supply him new boots?
The employee does not have to spend a penny for their boots unless they choose to go out and get a pair that's over $150. When I came on board as director, I increased what the amount was to be allowed for boots because I went out on my own and knew the necessary, what it costs for safety boots for my employees. That number has been to increase to 150. They can get more than one sets of boots. I also changed it so that now the boots are issued upon conditional need. For example, if the boots have steel shank, and that steel shank gets bent as a result of them working, all they have to do is return those boots. I will replace those boots, no questions asked. I found out something else. I've got bad feet. Some of my employees have bad feet. If they have a certain style of steel-toed boot, or shank that they cannot fit, and it is hurting their, their feet, we will replace those boots. It doesn't have to take a year. We've already shown them that we'll do that. All that we request is that they return the boots. Why? There are several reasons for this. I don't know if you're aware, but OSHA says, look, if you have problems with certain boots that we've made standards on, you need to let us know what those problems were. Were the shanks bent? Did they, were they, did they not last because they had nails punctured in them? Were glass able to cut through easily of the top of them? Is it a design flaw that the heels are not coming off? So yes, we request that the old boots be returned so that we can examine them, and we will give them a new pair of boots. This can be three or four times a year. It is dependent upon what happens to that individual and their boots.
And that's the same process with the uniforms as well?
Same process with uniforms. In fact, we have a uniform, a committee made up of the workers, and one of my supervisors, and they let us know as to what they feel they need. And to, with last year, we had never done this before with gloves, and I kept having complaints about some of my workers getting their, their hands cut on gloves. I told them, I don't know what gloves to pick. I want you all to tell me what gloves you want within the safety standards of answering. We use the safety officer for that. And our employees came back to us about the gloves that they felt they needed to be replaced, and I honored that request.
All right. Thank you, Mr., thank you, Director Lee. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Any other comments from the council about the budget?
Yes. I, I just wanted, in, in the budget, has the request proposal for the Education Advisory Committee been honored about $10,000 to $12,000? I also want to get an understanding of how much is, is going to be issued to Lars. I know that they were asking for a quarter million to continue their funding and serve in the community. Then I also wanted to know with bulk pickup in the last five years, how much revenue has it generated? And then also the, the amphitheater money from the SIPs on C Street, what account that that rests in? And is the money still there?
Council President, did you want me to answer the bulk pickup question?
Yes.
Okay. I will get you a response to take me a minute, take us a minute to pull up, and then I can get you a response on what we've collected for bulk pickup. But I will say this question, it came up last year, and what we collect in revenue for bulk pickup does not pay for what our labor rates are, for our employees, for the transiting of it, for that. It's only a portion. So it doesn't, there's not a profit to our bulk, bulk pickup. We're municipal service, so we don't calculate a profit for that service.
Sure, sure. And then the, the other questions are probably not yours as far as Lars and the Education Advisory Committee and the amphitheater.
The Lars, the Lars money is $10,000 this year. They got a quarter of a million out of the American Rescue Plan Fund, and they'll provide them another $10,000 out of this budget, which is in there, as well as the education.
So the answer is no. Thank you.
We've paid Lars over $520,000 through the ARPA funds. There's still another $198,000 in the ARPA funding. There's money in the community promotions budget to make a contribution to Lars. As far as the amphitheater money, when we receive funds for development projects, those are set aside in accounts. They're not in the budget.
Which account is it set in is what I'm asking? Like, where can I reflect this in the budget?
It's not in the budget until you appropriate it. So it's sitting off to the side in an account. I think it's Adequate Public Facilities escrow.
Okay. Okay. So that's the account that it's in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just saying it's not in the budget.
I understand.
It's not in the document.
I understand. And as far as the ARPA money, if they did need more money, they can make a request to continue to serve the community, because of course, the need has been greater since COVID, and especially since the county doesn't, you know, offer as much assistance. Because I know we look at Lars like our social service department here for the city.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to go on record and state that thus far, so far for Lars, they have received a total of 700,000, over $700,000, and they still have approximately almost $300,000 to spend as of right now. So if they do not expend that money, and they do need to, they can ask for a formal request, but they still have several hundred thousand dollars to spend.
Okay. And as far as the Education Advisory Committee proposal?
So for that, that money will come out of the community promotions budget and
From the mayor's office.
From the mayor's office, and it just doesn't goes to the education committee, it goes for all nonprofits. And I think it's over $40,000, 40, yeah, 44,375.
So the proposal will be honored? At least initial seating?
Let me, let me, I got that. We have been giving money to education since I became mayor.
I'm aware, but they're asking for initial money. They're asking for more money.
The program, no, they're not.
That, that's exactly what they're asking for.
She didn't even know about it.
That's not true at all. Because I spoke to her right before this meeting.
The grant program out of the City of Laurel's promotional fund, that money's been, we've been given money to the principals forever. What they want to do is add more schools, which will cost more money, and some of them are not in the city. And I told her that we would need to sit down and talk about that. The proposal that she sent last year, two years ago, not one council member, not one responded to her. So that's why I put
That can't be true. That's not true at all.
Excuse me.
Okay, finish.
That's why that money was put in there, and we continue to provide money to the education, to the principals. So it's there, yes.
So I just want to say that the chair, she said that, you know, the President Smith was aware, and council members sitting there, both members who sat on the committee of their proposal, and they were in favor and in support of their proposal. So to say that none of them, or none of us were aware or spoke up, that's, that's not true at all. And she is very aware that they received money. What she was asking for was additional money, and at the end of the day, $12,000 out of the $41 million budget is not a lot.
When I spoke to her, she wasn't aware of that we gave money to the
So what time was that?
Already, about five or 10 or 15 minutes ago. Pick one. The bottom line is, the money will be there. It's been there for years. We've always honored that, and we've always provided funding to the schools.
All right. But I do also want to go on record and say, I have spoken up for the education committee as well as councilman sitting there before. But you said it's funded, it's in the, it's in there, it's in the fund?
No. They're, they're trying to say they're going to continue to give the initial money that they've already been giving to the school. They're not going to
No, I, I understand that. I'm saying it's being funded, though, it's being ceded.
Proposal is not being ceded.
I have a question for the administration, just, so this is a citizens advisory committee. What does the resolution that created that committee state? Are they to be giving funds?
Good evening again. No, for that committee, they are not to be giving funds. One of their roles is to be a bridge between the school system and the community, i.e. for instance, if, for instance, if schools are having children that are below reading levels, they can work to have tutoring programs and so forth, different things like that. But the initial goal wouldn't be to provide grants to the schools for various reasons. As we have meetings with the principals every year, the mayor gives out money to the schools. So to answer your question in short, no.
So just so I'm clear, their job is to report back what the schools need and make a recommendation, but the funding should not go to that committee?
Right. And also work closely with the school, do various type of events, whether it's STEM programs, after-school programs, have meetings with the school and so forth.
So it sounds like this is already in the, the community budget, and it doesn't need to be an issue anymore?
Okay. Are there any other comments from the council?
I'd like to make a comment.
Councilman DeWalt?
I'm always going to be an advocate for Lars, and I talk to Shannon on a regular basis, and they're going to be hit, they're going to definitely be hit harder than usual as far as giving, giving food away. And I just can't see people starving in 2023. I never believed we would have to actually provide food for people, but it's a, it's a reality for it, and I would always support Lars. The other issue I have with this budget, and I'm, I'm going to vote yes, but after hearing Mr. Hester and the Ethics Commission, and the, what his, his, his training that he gave us, I fall into a lot of categories because I was an employee here. I worked here for 28 years. I mean, and I lived here for 38 years. So I'm eligible for the senior discount for my home because I lived in it for 38 years, which is the 20%. That's in that budget, I'm assuming. So I'm benefiting from that. So hopefully, me voting yes on the budget doesn't affect that. Then I'm a retiree. I put 28 years in here as a retiree. So, and I do advocate for a cost of living for retirees, and every one of you sitting up there that plan on retiring from here, the people that plan on retiring from here, when you get into your 15th or 20th year of retirement, and you don't get a cost of living, you'll say, damn, I knew I should have tried for that cost of living and put a little bit more pressure on them. It's going to happen, because everybody that, everybody that has an opportunity throughout my 28 years here, always calls me and asks me, why don't we get a cost of living? And you'll see, once you're in the program, you'll see for it. I also worked for a contractor who did work for, that did work in the city, but I've, I don't work for them since September 1st of 2022. So I don't, I broke ties with that, so I don't have to worry about that anymore in, as far as ethics go. But when I, I, I vote for this budget, Mr. Hester was very, very confusing. I mean, especially when you have the governor of Maryland preaching to get veterans a discount in their, their taxes that they pay out of their retirement, because he's a veteran. So he, he's going to benefit from that. And here, I talk about my own retirees, which I'm part of that plan, and I'm told to watch what I'm saying, because I, it might be an ethics violation. So in voting for this budget, and there's probably other stuff on this thing, every time I do something in this community, I worry about the ethics and how he's going to, how he's going to perceive that. And it's perception, most of this Ethics Commission is perception. And I worry about, is Mr. Hester going to be pleased with that? Especially when he tells you, if you have any questions before you do that, just don't write me a one-page synopsis of it, write a five-page synopsis. Holy heck, if I did that, every time I walk out the door, I'd have to write five pages on what I do for this city. And so I'm definitely going to vote yes. Hopefully, I don't get thrown in front of Mr. Hester with the Ethics Commission, and hopefully, everything goes smoothly for me. It's just, I just wanted to bring it up because it's very, very confusing when you're a former employee, you're a senior that has a home, and you worked prior for a contractor that works for the city, and there's probably a few other things about that. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments about the budget?
I have one comment. I just wanted to thank all the staff that put this together. It's a very long budget. I asked close to 50 questions. All of them were answered in a timely manner. And with that, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2020, 2011.
A second.
All right. Well, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mau?
Yeah, I want to concur, and I want to thank the staff, especially on the pay plan. It was almost an eight-month process. But I think every several years since I've been mayor, we've tried to, to reexamine the salary structure and do what's best and what we can afford. So I do want to thank you all for the hard work you did, all the department heads, where we had to shift some money around to make programs work. There is, as I said, there's funding in there for many different things. One of those is what we call a 13th paycheck. It's not a lot for the retirees. Instead of 12 checks, you'll get 13. We just could not afford a COLA in the pension plan. It compounds each year. There's, it is not fully funded where we thought it would be now that the, you know, the market is turning, we're not making as much money. There's a whole lot of things that go into play with that. I did have the opportunity to talk to several retirees who appreciate it, understood, and thanked the city for at least remembering them when we talk about that. Again, maybe down the road, there's something that can be, can be done, but you need not only look at what year it is, you need to look down the road on this next several years. And that's with everything, with all the pension, all the benefits, all the things that we do here. And it has to be a priority. It's nice to be able to say, and I'd love to be the mayor, to be able to say, here's some money, go do this. It all has to be prioritized, and we try to make it, and we try to stretch it. There are some things that are coming online within the next year, year and a half, that some mayor sitting here will be able to work with the city council, make sure those funds are appropriately divvied out within the community, depending on what their priorities will be. And I think Mr. DeWalt, on the statement, because it's coming to you next month, the Ethics Commission, or the Ethics Update will be here, so you'll have some fun with that. Where you get in trouble with ethics is when you, you know, he mentioned a lot of things that we're, as a group, that we're doing. Where you get in trouble is where you're doing it for me, you're doing it for I. That's the things that you have to make sure you don't do. But I, again, appreciate everybody's support, appreciate all the input from everyone. And with that, Mr. President, I'll concur.
All right. Well, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your last budget and getting approved. Moving on to agenda item number 10, second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 2010, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter 7, garbage, waste, weeds, recycling, et cetera, to include the mandatory diversion of organics from the waste stream and providing for an effective date. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:25 p.m.
Mr. President, if I might?
Yes.
We did ask for input on this. The, I did meet internally with staff and listen to some of the comments and letters we got. We did make some changes, some additions to ordinance 2010, to hopefully meet everybody's approval. We hope that you'll accept this as amended and move it forward, because I do think down the road, again, looking at things, plans need to be started, funding, all of those things when we talk about expanding this. And I'll answer any questions. I sent out a memo to you all on May the 11th, if anybody has any comments or questions, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. President, I do have some comments. So we did have a hearing on this at the Environmental Affairs Committee. Some of the recommendations were Environmental Affairs Committee. Some of the recommendations were relayed to the administration. The dates in this ordinance have been changed. The committee unanimously thought that this was a great ordinance moving to mandatory diversion of organics. They did ask that we as a council make sure that there's funding in the budget to make sure there's education component, not just penalization of people as we get to the 2025 date, but make sure that we're educating people as we get through that process and also helping to promote, and I saw it at Main Street Festival, that we're including those receptacles at our events so that we're doing recycling and composting. I did speak with the administration and those things will be happening as we move forward with this. So it's the recommendation of the Environmental Affairs Committee that we move forward with this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council before I call for a motion?
Yes. I appreciate the city for bringing this up. I know that we're already leaders in the composting program in the county. And I also wanted to give thanks to Jana Levin or Jeanne Levin because she does a lot of, she's a compost warrior. So she goes into the schools around Prince George's County and helped them set up their composting program. So when I went to Laurel Elementary School, I got to speak to some of the students and the kids about composting, but also got to see the composting bins right outside their classrooms. And so that was, that was very great. And I guess that the only question I have is I just wanted to figure out if this was residential and commercial. I didn't, I didn't remember if this, if this covered both residential and commercial.
Residential.
Thanks.
All right. Any other comments from the council before I call for a motion? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:28 PM and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2010.
I second it.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mau.
Yeah, I'm going to concur and let me also acknowledge and thank Michelle Blair, who's worked very, very hard on all of this. And I asked the council, and I think we're going to ask that the plastic bag won't come back on your work session so we can get some input on that, try to move that forward. So I'll concur. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Well, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned.